Good evening, everyone. I call this special meeting of April 27th, 2021 to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Afanjah?
Here.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here. Let the record show that all board members are present. But I, if I could ask our student representative, Paul Karnack, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Karnack. I now will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Mason and a second from Dr. Woodhouse to approve the agenda for this evening. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. The motion passes. The purpose of this special meeting this evening is to discuss school renaming. For the public's awareness, the Board started discussions about the potential need to rename schools in the spring of 2020. However, the process was disrupted with the pandemic, like so many other things, with both safety concerns and our focus on student academic performance. However, this topic has remained a priority for this Board, as was demonstrated in March of this year, when the Board approved $150,000 in the FY22 budget, operating budget, to address school renaming. In September of last year, Board members received a committee report entitled, "A History of the Origins of School Names." The committee was made up of the following people: Alma Dietz, Hampton City Schools Social Studies K-12 Curriculum Leader, who was also the Chair of the Committee; Lucy Cochran, Executive Director Hampton History Museum; Beth Austin, Registrar and Historian Hampton History Museum; Charles Baumgartner, Social Studies Elementary Teacher Specialist; Beth Leatherwood, Secondary Teacher Specialist; and Rodney Richardson, Grade 8 Civics and Economics Teacher. This committee did an excellent job researching the history of the school names within Hampton City Schools, citing sources, and providing us with critical information to support informed discussions and decisions. I did want to say that I did receive individual feedback from Board members during one-to-one conversations about the committee's report. And based on those one-to-one conversations, it appears that the majority of the Board members felt two school names in particular needed to be addressed in the near term. And those two names were John B. Carey Elementary and John Tyler Elementary. With that, I will open the floor for discussion from Board members and ask if there are other school names that the Board would like to discuss or consider.
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Cherry?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just wanted to just give a little bit of backdrop in terms of the look at several of our schools that have names that we don't feel reflect what it should reflect. And that started back when, actually, as you said, when I was Chair. And we asked Ms. Alma Dietz, the HCS Social Studies K-12 Curriculum Leader, to put together, along with the Superintendent, to put together a task force, if you will, a committee, to look at these names and not only to look at them, but give the historical background. And I just want to say, Ms. Dietz, your committee did an outstanding job. Outstanding. And while I looked through, as every other Board member did, all the names and all of the pieces that went into naming those schools, the names that they currently have, I must say that I actually was saddened at a lot of it.
Yeah.
There was so much mistreatment. There was so much bias. And yet, our children are entering the doors of schools named after certain people. I know, Mr. Chairman, that you talked about the two that had come up. But I also know that when Mr. Samuels and I met, well, actually, we talked on the phone, about us getting this train back on track, it was so that we could take a look at two things. One thing is the policy, which the first line states that the Board will name the schools of the city of Hampton. And the second thing is taking a hard look and hearing from Board members what you think rises to the top. I know personally, I had, number one, C. Vernon Spratley. And I had C. Vernon Spratley, and I would like this Board to at least consider, after I've made the comments, adding that to the list. I had C. Vernon Spratley because in the wonderful documentation done by Ms. Dietz's team, I learned that Mr. Spratley was a judge in Hampton. His duty was to dispense justice. Yet, there was an Anglo-Saxon committee in Hampton at the same time, which was a white supremacist group, of which Mr. Spratley was a member. I cannot imagine how justice was dispensed when you are an avid member of a white supremacist group. Mr. Spratley proved how it was done. Because in 1929, Mr. Spratley, or let's say Judge Spratley, learned of an interracial couple living in Phoebus. And he ordered them to be removed from the county. He also encouraged the voter registration officials to keep blacks from voting by using arbitrary measures, such as many of us have heard, like determining how many jelly beans are in the jar. Yet, we have a school named after this man, who was always pro-segregation and anti-equality. And in 1929, when he was walking through Phoebus, ordering that interracial couple to leave the county, that stuck with me as I was reading the information from Ms. Dietz's committee. Because you know what? In 1929, two other things happened. Anne Frank was born, and so was Dr. Martin Luther King. Two people who stood for everything except hate, except bigotry, except inequality. So I, for that reason, would like to have added C. Vernon Spratley's name to the list, sir.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cherry. Well said. Yes, Mr. Samuels?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Like Ms. Cherry said so eloquently, when I submitted my list to you a few months ago, it had Carey and Tyler, which were the top two, in my opinion. However, there was another name that I submitted for consideration by this Board. And that school is Booker. And prior to Ms. Alma Dietz and her staff doing this research and providing this report to the Board, I did some independent research on my own when I served as a Chair as we were going through the process of renaming Davis Middle School. And there were several names of school, including this one, Booker, that surfaced. And I felt at that time that this school should be named because of the history that I came across. And then to also receive this research that aligns with the research that I did back in 2015, 2016. And I feel that Booker should be added to the list for consideration because of the historical context as it relates to enslaved people, that this family owned several, I believe, over 70 Africans that were enslaved. And it wasn't just them for one generation. These slaves were passed down from the father to the son to the grandchildren. Furthermore, they made it a very, they made it poignant that they supported slavery, whereas many of their family members were members of the Confederacy. And they had, they served a major role in the Confederacy. And for generations, we have, and I'm speaking now as a person of color, black man, it's been generational hurt. And it's also been where, because of what has transpired, because of what was withheld from black people, our people that were enslaved and over the generation, we weren't able to build generation wealth because that was withheld from us. And I would like to see this name add to the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Other comments from Board members? Yes?
I'll jump right in. I can agree, of course, with Mr. Samuels and also Ms. Cherry because I too had Spratley on my list as well. And then I also had Carey. But one of the things that was important, when we first started talking about this as far as changing the names of the schools, I talked with some Hampton City Schools students who actually attended these schools. And there were several of them that had challenges when they were actually in these schools. They started looking at the history, you know, of the United States and of the Civil War and Revolution and everything, whatever. And they did have some angst and some hurt feelings when it came to them having to attend a school with these names. So I do think it's very important that we, you know, move forward with these things because not only those schools, but I think it's necessary to identify some of the other schools that came up as well. I know on my list, I had Spratley and Carey as, you know, for immediate changing. But of course, looking at some of the finances that are there, we need to look at putting Baron, Phillips, Tucker Caps, Tyler, Booker, and Eaton on that list as well, as far as making sure that we look at those schools in terms of making those changes in the school names. Because those were some of the schools also that I know students had some challenges with. And even looking at the history, which was, as everybody has said, Ms. Dietz's wonderful job in compiling all of this data for us. These things have definitely been troubling in our school division over the years. And I think it's time that we definitely, you know, look at changing these names because we have to move more in the direction of equity as it relates to that and, you know, remove this institutional racism that occurs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. Other comments? Yes, Ms. Banks Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo all of the narrative that my fellow Board members have already stated. I do have a question to find out, how many are we able to rename with the allocated funding? Because I know that Mr. or Dr. Mason has added some more to his list as well. And I just want to know if we have that number of how many we can actually potentially look at renaming.
You're talking about for immediate?
Yes, immediate.
Immediate renaming?
I'll take a swing at this, and then I'm going to defer to Dr. Smith and maybe Dr. Bowling. There's two different approaches. You can make modifications on a temporary basis. You can put a very nice quality vinyl sign over a marquee. You can take down building letters. So there's temporary things that you can do. And I think we've, they've developed cost estimates to do that. But then there's the long-term permanent change, which is at an elevated cost. So it really depends on how you approach it as to how many you can change. Dr. Smith, is that?
For elementary schools, you're looking at about 25,000. I always want to go a little higher because nobody gets mad at you if you're little shit. Either they're really happy when it comes in under that. For your middle schools, you're looking at roughly, it's about a $10,000 increase, about 32,000, just say 32 to 35. And then for your high schools, you're looking probably at 40 to 45,000. And just remember, as you go into those, every school's a little different. Just when it was built and how they decorated and what's been done over the years.
So Dr. Bowling, just for clarification.
Those numbers you gave are for the temporary?
That would be for your permanent.
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 But there is one step more where if you change out the marquee, it elevates that cost a little bit more.
Yeah, we're going to factor out the marquee. So when you see that in that spreadsheet, factor that out because Dr. Smith had already made plans to have the marquees changed out at all the schools. So that's in the capital budget, capital improvement.
That'll be just on the capital budget.
Yes.
Correct.
So don't factor that cost in.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Banks?
Okay.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So are you done with your comments, Ms. Banks Gray? Any other comments before I start cycling back around? Yes, Mr. Karnack?
Yes, so I'll direct this question either to Dr. Bowling or Dr. Smith. So with the planned marquee replacement, are we still at a stage where we can, the marquees that we are putting in, we can change those up with the new names? We have not already ordered those marquees necessarily with the old names that exist today?
We have not.
Okay.
We purposefully held off in terms of where we thought the Board might consider. And so we have not moved forward with those specific marquees.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Glad to hear that. And that saves us a lot of potential.
Very good question.
So, Ms. Jackson Afanjah?
Yes, I just did want to say that I also concur with the Board members who have already spoken regarding the names and those names that rise to the top of the list and those that potentially could be looked at at a later date. I'm really happy that the Division has already set aside funds to address this. And that really puts us in a better position to make decisions about how many names and which ones should go first and which ones next. But I am really in agreement with the other Board members. I found, as I read through the information, that was, again, extremely detailed and really well done, that the majority of the names were concerning. They rose to some level of concern. I mean, so it was really hard to decide which ones were the worst in some instances because there were a lot that were concerning. And so I look forward to the Board coming to some solutions about which names should be changed and moving forward with that.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson Afanjah. Dr. Woodhouse?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I too, where I piggyback on what the Board has said, being one who have experienced some racist activity towards you personally, I was definitely grieved when I read over the report way back when we first received it. And so some, many of those names that we've shared tonight were very concerning to me as far as naming schools after persons who had been so diligent at keeping racism and segregation at the forefront. And so I too had about seven on my list that I was considering, that we needed to look at. And Carey, Tyler, and Spratley, and even Booker were some of the ones that were on my top list, along with Tucker Cap and Baron and Eaton.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Dr. Woodhouse. So I'll cycle back through. Anyone have any more comments?
Comments on what?
What's that?
Comments on what?
Just any other comments on names. Because my plan now is to circle back with the seven names and get some consensus. I think I'm hearing consensus on all of them. But the issue will then be, I think the names exceed the budget that we have.
Yeah.
So we're going to need to talk about how we might like to prioritize them. Yes, Mr. Karnack, you have a comment?
May I comment on that? I wasn't sure if you were finished briefing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to commend the members of this committee for the fantastic historical analysis you did. We certainly, as a Division, did our research on this. We had outside experts. So we are definitely informed in the correct and proper manner as to what these names truly mean, what kind of legacies, you know, good in the case of, for example, Mr. Robert Moten, bad in the place of, in the case of many others. And so I would like to concur with other Board members who pointed to C. Vernon Spratley and his name being on the Gifted Center as a concern. And what we can do in the case of Spratley in particular is rename it to Mary Peak. That was the name of the Elementary Gifted Center before. There is, it is not only precedent, but it's the right thing to do. So that's a very, that's a very clear message that we can send. Mary Peak taught under the Emancipation Oak. And since that was the name of one of our former gifted centers, we could change it to that. That stands out particularly to me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Karnack. So, yes, Ms. Cherry?
Are you getting ready to ask, are you circling back now?
Yes, I am.
On the names? Okay, okay. If we had money in the budget to do four, my four would be Spratley, Carey, Tyler, and Booker. If we only had money in the budget to do?
Excuse me, in that order?
In that order.
Okay.
And also, Mr. Chair, I have an idea of the names because if the intent of this meeting is to look at the names we'd like to see changed and offer up some names we'd like to see them become, then I have that as well.
And I?
And I'm not going to do that part yet because I know you're not ready for that part. So I would have Spratley, Carey, Tyler, and Booker.
Okay.
If I could only have three, it would be Spratley, Carey, and Tyler.
Right, okay.
If I could only have two, it would be Spratley and Carey.
I bet if you only had one, it's Spratley.
I think you might have that right. Okay.
Now I figured that out.
Okay. And we'll come back to the names when you come back around.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we got $150,000 in the budget, so we're good.
We're good.
So I did, I did want to say to Board members, the names, the school names that I'm looking at, and just to make sure I've captured them all, are Carey, in no particular order, Carey, Tyler, Spratley, Tucker Caps, Booker, Phillips, Eaton, and Baron. Is that in alignment with the comments that we've made so far?
Does that align with you, Dr. Woodhouse? Because you said a lot.
But that, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. You gave me four.
I gave you four, based on what I thought the budget was. So maybe we can start there, the top four for people.
So I'll sort of go, I'll go around and I'll start with Ms. Banks Gray and say, what would your top four be?
Okay, and I'm not going to be as detailed as Ms. Cherry was when she actually narrowed it down to three, two. I'm not going to do that, y'all, so just FYI. So my, the top four that I have, it would be Carey, Tyler, Booker, and Spratley.
Okay, all right. All right, I will then move to Ms. Jackson Afanjah.
Well, I had, but briefly. Definitely I had Carey, Carey. I had Tucker Caps on my list because, you know, like I said, there were so many of them that just existed the same amount of racism and oppression. But a murder and racism was, was to the top of the list for me. So four, and talked about real, I mean, Tucker Caps.
Right.
Talked about some really killing that were.
Some murder and troubling, troubling stuff.
You know, and so that's why I took Tucker Caps, I mean. Spratley and Booker, I would say Carey.
Tucker Caps, Spratley.
All right, thank you very much. Dr. Mason?
My list is very straightforward. Spratley, Carey, Tyler, and Booker.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Samuels?
So if we're doing them in order and not just four, picking out four, my order would be Tyler, Spratley, Carey, Booker.
All right, Dr. Woodhouse?
Well, mine were Spratley, Tucker Caps, Tyler, and Carey's.
All right, very good. And mine were going to be Carey, Tyler, Tucker Caps, and then Spratley. So the interesting thing about this is that we have four elementary schools and one middle school. And by my math, with what Dr. Bowling said, we actually can do five, potentially. And the reality is that if you take everybody's inputs, we only talked about five schools here. We mentioned other schools that will be sort of in Phase Two with the future budget. But it looks like without having to say this school had this many people want it versus the other, it's five schools.
Five schools.
And if the, if the math is correct, elementaries are around 25K, middle school about 10 more than that, we're still below the 150K that we budgeted.
Yep.
Reasonable?
That's reasonable.
Okay, awesome. So I did, I did want to say something just real quick that I thought would, I'm always, I'm always that guy that really likes powerful statements. The Governor of Virginia issued a letter back last summer. And he encouraged Boards to do the very thing that we're doing. And one of the things that he said in his letter that I wanted to just read out loud was, "Now is the time to change them," talking about school names, "to reflect the inclusive, diverse, and welcoming school community every child deserves." So I thought that was, that was very well put. It's a, it's a great letter, by the way, if you get a chance to read it.
Yeah, I read it.
Okay, so now we move on to sort of the next steps of this process, which is going to be in accordance with our policy, which is FFA. The Board has the responsibility for changing names. But we need to solicit public input on what those names might be. Now, the committee did an excellent job. If you look on page 30 of the report,
Yeah.
the committee made some names that they recommend or suggest. or suggestions that they recommended, which included names like, I don't want to leave any of the names out, so I'm going to actually go to page 30. But it was Mary Christian, Dr. Mary Christian, Mary Jackson, Catherine Johnson, and Dorothy Vaughn. I think that was it. Okay.
That's it.
But I wanted to open the floor back up now to discussion of school names, realizing that the board will need to solicit public input on these names. So, we actually don't necessarily have to decide on names right now. It may actually be in our interest to talk about when we would like to hear from the public, collect that data, and then have a discussion about the names. So, I'll open up the floor to thoughts from board members about that. Yes, Ms. Cherry?
I feel that the board should take the lead in developing a list of names.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, the community input we would have is to determine how the community feels about the names that this board has put up. For me, personally, I don't have a lot of names that I would like to throw out because I'm committed to one name. And while we have many, many names on list that all deserve it, I think one name has been overlooked in this community. I'm appalled that it has, and I'm sure it wasn't intentional, but I'd like to put forth the name of former Hampton mayor Ann Hich Kilgore. With the caveat and the understanding and the revealing that she in no way is related to Joe Kilgore, okay? So, Joe talked about that. He said, "People are going to think she's connected to me." No, no, she isn't, and she wasn't. But Ann Kilgore was not only the first female mayor of the city of Hampton. Ann Kilgore actually was always dedicated to education. And I just want to tell you just a little bit about her. She started out, actually, Dr. Smith, as a teacher at Hampton High School. A lot of people didn't know that. That's where her community service actually began. And when she became a member of Hampton City Council, she ended up serving not one, well, she served like for eight years as mayor, and then she came off and then went back and served another four years as mayor. And under her leadership as mayor, she was not a let's just cut the ribbon kind of mayor. She was a giant among giants. I was blessed to have worked with her, being hired technically by her and Andy Greenwell when I came out of college. Because Ann Kilgore, her legacy is that she built that Hampton Coliseum. She built that new police station we have. She also, when you talk about Thomas Nelson Community College, she donated the land. And a lot of people, all they know is Ann Kilgore and that Hampton Coliseum. But more importantly, when the efforts came about regarding desegregating our schools, and almost every city and every state was having demonstrations and KKK signs, Ann Kilgore successfully desegregated Hampton City Public Schools and businesses without one lawsuit. She left her home and with and stood in the street and said, "This is not happening in Hampton." And when you read her obituary, you will find that her family said of all the accomplishments she had, and I remember working with her, when we brought in the United States Indoor National Tournament, she brought in national things. When the lady now who is Wonder Woman was flitting around the pool at Chamberlain Hotel because the contest was held there, she brought in national things. But I remember Ann Kilgore went somewhere to another country, saw a school that had no walls, and it was successful. And she came back to Hampton and she said, "I want one in Hampton." Thus, Fever's High School. She did the same thing with lights she saw in a different country, lights in downtown Hampton. But according to her obituary produced by her family, of all the wonderful things she did, her greatest accomplishment, in her words, were desegregating Hampton City Public Schools and businesses and doing it, as I said, without one lawsuit. So, I think when we talk about education, and she also established in 1965 an Ann Kilgore Scholarship, that was for women interested in community service and government. She was the epitome, not only of a person who recognizes and appreciates the field of education, but more importantly, she was a champion for equality. And therefore, I'd like to put forth that name. And I can't think of a better school to have be renamed than Spratley. Where you've got a hater on one end and a lover of people and freedom on the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. And I will point out that Ann Kilgore did raise a daughter who became a superintendent of public schools.
Absolutely.
Education was in her household.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Dr. Woodhouse?
Just a quick comment. I am excited about what we're doing. I think we're doing a great, a great service to Hampton and what we are challenged to do now. One of the things, though, that I've always been a champion for is if you name something after someone who has accomplished something great and successful. And whenever we are talking about education and naming something that is involved with education, I always feel pressured and excited about naming something, or let's just say school, after someone who was a champion for education. And so, I hadn't heard about, I had heard about Ms. Ann Kilgore, but I did not know all of those particulars about her. But I'm glad you brought that up on tonight. And I think that that would be a great, great name to consider also.
Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse.
Mr. Samuels?
Thank you, Chairman. I concur with Ann in regards to, you know, the board putting out some names and then having the public to share their input. And I, I'm delighted that you shared Ann Kilgore. Thank you for speaking so eloquently and sharing her history as it relates to the city of Hampton and her being a Hamptonian. But I would like to also throw another name in the hat, if I could. And that person recently passed away, and I had, and I still have tremendous respect for this person, Judge Alfred Patrick, who served as Hampton General District Judge and also served 10 years as a Hampton School Board Member. And I believe that he would be, be fitting for one of our schools to be named in honor of Judge Alfred Patrick because of the contribution he, he shared with the city of Hampton and being a Hamptonian. I would ask the board to strongly consider Alfred, Judge Alfred Patrick. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels? Other names board members want to put forth? Yes, Dr. Mason?
Yes, one of the names that the committee also did some research on was Dr. Mary T. Christian. And Dr. Christian is no stranger to the Hampton community and all that she did locally for education, as well as working over at Hampton University, serving as the dean of the School of Education, going on to work in the General Assembly to promote greater things for education across the state. So, I would definitely say we should consider putting Dr. Mary T. Christian's name on one of our schools for all that she's done for education for Hampton and the state of Virginia.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. Well said. Other names board members would like to put forth? Yes, Ms. Jackson Afonja?
Along with the research that was given to us and the recommendations for names, I was pleased with, again, Dr. Christian, Mary Jackson, and Catherine Johnson, I thought would be, would be appropriate for naming of our schools. I thought the information here reflected their commitment to education and to Hampton. And so, I would be in favor of those as well. And I do also thank you again, Ms. Cherry, for the information about Ann Kilgore. I knew some things about her, but not nearly as much as that, and I would be in favor of her name as well.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Was Catherine Johnson's name picked up by Newfoundland's Public Schools?
Is it, what was that?
Picked up as a name in Newfoundland's Public Schools recently, Catherine Johnson.
I believe so.
Yes.
Samuels?
Okay, thanks, okay.
It was in the name of Chris.
Yes.
It was an article featured in the name of Chris last Thursday afternoon.
I, I think since Hidden Figures came out, she's gotten her name on quite a few buildings. But she was well deserved, though, by the way.
Yes.
Yeah, it is well deserved.
Other, yes, Ms. Banks Gray?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chair. I would like to also thank Ms. Cherry for that, that great historical background on Ms. Kilgore. I did not know that, and I appreciate that. She sounds like a phenomenal woman, and I really do think that's something that we need to take into consideration as far as naming a school after her as well. One of the names, and Dr. Mason did share this as well, that was at the top of my list, was Dr. Mary T. Christian, serving as the first African-American woman elected to Hampton City School Board. I think she deserves that honor and that all that she said, that she's done for, you know, she did for the Hampton City Schools in addition to Virginia education. I think she deserves that honor.
Thank you, Ms. Banks Gray. Any other comments from board members? All right, so it happens to be that board members offered up five names. Coincidental? And I will say that I might ask if the, if the board agrees that part of the process of suggesting a name is you have to put it in writing and you have to give reasons for the support, for supporting the suggestion. I know the committee did an excellent job putting the suggestions together that they did. I wonder, should we ask that committee to reconvene temporarily to do the same for Ann Kilgore and for Judge Patrick? So that we have that sort of same flavor plus cited sources from the committee?
We're happy to do so.
Okay, all right. That way, we will have all the, all the documentation and cited sources for the names that we're So, next steps would be to go to the public and solicit input on the, the new names that we are suggesting. So, yes, Dr. Mason?
Quick question, do we need to approve that we, you know, put a motion on, so we actually are going to change the names?
I, I think. I'll ask Ms., Ms. Reeves.
As long as you all have come to a consensus of the five that you're doing now, and because you're going to leave at least three for a later period of time when budgeted, correct?
Yeah, right.
As long as you come to a consensus that those are the five that are going to be renamed in this round, you're fine not to, not to vote. You all certainly have reached a consensus.
Right, I think, I think, Dr. Mason, because we've reached consensus, we can move forward. The actual vote to rename them will be when we, we deliberate the name suggestions and say, "These are the names that we're going to use on these schools." And there will be a...
It'll be, they'll be combined at that time.
Right.
So, your next step is to have the public input that was required by your school board policy with respect to the new names that have been suggested. And you would have that in a public forum, like a public hearing. And then, at that point, you, you actually are going to have to line up each one of your five schools with the five names and see which name you want to go with each school. And then, at that point, you're going to have a vote that says, you know, "We vote that we're going to change the name of C. Vernon Spratley to X. And we're going to change the name of Booker Elementary School to Y."
And the reason that it, it then becomes actionable, right? We've then directed the administration to go do something with the funds that were set aside. Yes, Mr. Samuels?
So, for clarity, Chairman Kilgore, may I ask Ms. Nancy a question? So, for clarity, Nancy, you said that we have to have public input. Are you saying a public hearing? Or if we tasked the duty to the superintendent to collect information about the names that we are considering, do we need to have a public hearing?
Yeah, I think I have the answer to that, Mr. Samuels.
Okay.
In the actual wording of the policy, it says, "The board will solicit and accept input from the public regarding the names of schools or school facilities, but reserves the right to make the final decision regarding the name of any school or school facility." So, it actually is an action that the board has to take to solicit public input.
Yeah, but we are not, so we're asking them, the public, then to share input on the five names, so they can do the, the five names. So, this could be done via Survey Monkey or whatever versus us having a public hearing? That's, that's, that's my question. Because the, 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 the policy doesn't clearly state how we can obtain this information from the public.
So, you're saying we could send something out or have something that says, "These are the five names we're looking at. Let us know what you think."
Yes.
Versus asking the public to give us names?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
But you're not asking the public to give you names. You're just asking the, the public to, you're soliciting input.
All the names.
And you are required to solicit the input. And the better, it, it's not required, but the better way to solicit input, just like we do at budget hearings and just like we did when we did Davis and Lee, we elicited public input at a public forum so that everyone had an opportunity to participate. Because some people don't, don't know how to use the survey, or some people wouldn't know. They can come to a public forum and, and be, be heard, and that, that keeps it completely open and available to the public to be participatory.
Okay, I see that perspective, absolutely. Okay.
Yes, Ms. Jackson Afonja?
Actually, before we move forward, I wanted to, for Mary Peak's name to be considered as well. We have five schools, five names, and that doesn't, I mean, we'll have public comment, but it's five schools, five names. You know, if we, if we have more names, then we can see which five rise to the top of everyone's, you know, what everyone is most interested in, or the public is most interested, interested in. Because right now, there's five names, there's, that's all we, they won't, the public won't be able to come here and say, "We suggest this name."
Okay.
They only have the five names to comment on that we have already selected. And I think Mary Peak was formerly, we had a school formerly named, and, and her bio here is really impressive as it relates to Hampton City Schools and to Hampton in general.
I think that's where I'm getting confused.
Yes, ma'am.
The public will come because we're saying to the public, "We've got five names, and we want to hear what you think about it." Is that, is that correct?
Potentially now six, yeah.
But, yeah, but although it's a potential now six, I guess the chairman would then have to ask us to see if there's a consensus for us to then move the number from five to six?
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly.
Correct.
Because then that changes things. Because we'd have to move from five to six, if the chairman tells us to.
Well, how does that change things?
Not schools, just suggested names.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same as moving from three to four, two to three. We, you know, we started out with four names that were suggested, then we added Judge Patrick. That was an addition. So, we moved from whatever number we were with that addition. And so, it's just moving, you know, it's not about the, the schools themselves, it's additional name that I think should be considered for public comment.
So, I think it, because we had five schools and five names. That was kind of clean. I just don't want the administration to end up all over the place because there are two hundred and thirty names coming up.
That's, that's going, that was.
That's where I'm going with that.
That's going to be.
And that, that's going to tie the administration's hands. It really, really is.
Well, we've already decided that there, that we were going to decide the names that the public could speak about, that the public could not enter a name to be considered. So, whether we come up with three names, or five names, or six, or seven, that's the end, that's the end of it. So, it won't be two hundred and thirty.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I, we have, we have more names to change of, of schools, so I think we, we can actually, you know.
That's a good point.
Add more names. We do have more names if, and we might, I don't know what the number looks like, but maybe if we even crunch the numbers to see exactly what the exact cost may be, instead of doing five, we may be able to add a sixth one in this round. But, you know, if not, just save, if we present six names, just save that additional name, because I think all of the names that have been mentioned are definitely worthy. Um, and so, maybe saving the one that we don't choose for this first round, um, to consider for the second round for the remainder of the schools that we seek to change.
Good point.
Yes, that's, yeah.
Okay. All right.
That's why you're the PhD.
So, just to recap on the names, it is Ann Killgor, Judge Alfred Patrick, Dr. Mary Christian, Mary Jackson, Catherine Johnson, and Mary Peak.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Six.
Obviously, the, the next step now is the committee doing a little bit of, uh, data collection on Ann Cherry and Judge Patrick.
I appreciate that, but you meant Ann Killgor, right?
Did I say?
Ann Cherry. My school's coming up in the second round.
Ann Killgor. And, um, giving them time to do that so that when we have public input, all the bios and sources can be provided to the public in advance. But, the next thing will be, uh, selecting a date, that we would have at least one public hearing. So, I don't know if, how the board feels about selecting a date this evening or waiting, and then we discuss that once we get, uh, some information from the committee. What's, what's the pleasure of the board?
We, we will work according to your timeline.
Okay.
So, once. Yes. Yeah, we'll be prepared.
All right. So, everybody got their calendars or? Would you, I'm thinking the month of April is not reasonable, but the month of May, um, we, we could do the Wednesday, well, no. Anybody have an issue with the Wednesday between our board meetings, which would be May twelfth?
Right.
Availability? Dr. Smith?
Absolutely.
May twelfth at six thirty here at Jones Magnet Middle School?
Mm-hmm.
All right, May twelfth. Excellent. All right, um, I, um, I'm thinking. Yep?
Great.
All right, well, I think that's all, yes, Ms. Banks Gray?
Yes, sir, just one more time, um, before we get out of here, I wanted to, um, thank Ms. Alma Dietz and her committee for such a well-researched document for review. I truly appreciate that. I know that was a lot of work that was put into this, very detailed, and I applaud you all, and I appreciate it so much. So, thank you all.
Yeah.
All right. Well, then, without further discuss, yes, Mr. Karnak?
A point of clarification, looking at this report and the names, the additional names you've suggested, I actually count seven, uh, Mary Peak, Dr. Mary T. Christian, Mary Jackson, Catherine Johnson, Dorothy Vaughn, uh, Ms. Ann Killgor, Judge Patrick, and those would be the seven.
I don't think we said Dorothy. I don't believe we added Dorothy Vaughn.
No, no.
Did not add? Okay, it is listed in the report, but that is not a name we're suggesting.
There's six.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karnak. Could you name the five, the five schools again? Yes, I will, I will recap this before we adjourn. Uh, so, the, uh, the five schools that are going to be in the near term that we address or attempt to address with FY twenty-two funds will be Carey Elementary, Tyler Elementary, Severn and Spratly, uh, Gifted Center, Tucker Caps Elementary, and Booker Elementary. The names that we will, uh, suggest and solicit public input are Ann Killgor, Judge Alfred Patrick, Dr. Mary Christian, Mary Jackson, Catherine Johnson, and Mary Peak. All right, again, I want to thank all my board members for coming to this meeting, for prepared to, uh, to have a great discussion, and I, I really appreciate all the input. And I want to thank all the staff for, uh, showing up, and Dr. Smith on, on short notice. I really appreciate that. So, without further ado.
Joe, before you adjourn.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes, that's fine.
We have been, um, sharing, um, our appreciation to, um, Ms. Dietz and the staff, and then to Dr. Smith and his staff. But I also want to express my sincere appreciation to the chairman, um, to really, um, follow through with, um, this process in an expedition manner after, you know, we, he and I started talking. And so, Joe, I just want to say, thank you, man, for really spearheading this and having a conversation with Dr. Smith of, of, you know, all the stuff that you did behind a closed door with Dr. Smith to get this meeting done. And also, Ms. Bowers, the amazing Ms. Bowers. Thank you so much, um, for the work that you do on a daily basis, you know, to support the board in regards to making sure that this work and, um, because, you know, and within what, three days or so, we have this meeting. So, thank you, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels, and you are quite welcome. So, without further ado, this meeting is adjourned. All right.